It's two. For Terry's partying, he just stepped out. Melton, Pauls, Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the National Anthem and the invocation by Councilmember Vinnie Palermo.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. Good afternoon. This morning, driving my daughter to school, she tells me, Dad, today's your day. And I didn't know what she was talking about. She goes, today's your day. You get to vote, and you should tell everybody you know. And I'm thinking, my gosh, she's nine years old. I was worried about what was going to be on cartoons after school, and here she is worried about voting. So I told her, well, I think we've got it covered from TV to radio to newspaper to social media to everybody doing their work on campaigns. We're well aware of what today means. So regardless of who you are, how rich you are, how poor you are, you get one vote. And I would ask you, if you haven't did that yet today, please vote. Thank you.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Item six.
Oh, you don't make your...
Oh, is everybody going to behave today? I have to make the announcement. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we ask you to please turn off or silence your phones at this time. Madam Clerk.
Items six to eight relate to the same project and can be considered together for Heartland Church subdivision located at 5046 Terrace Drive. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six, an ordinance to rezone this property from DR District and R6 District to R5 District. Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Heartland Church subdivision. Item eight, a resolution to approve the final plat for Heartland Church subdivision.
The public hearings on items six through eight begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
My name is Kyle Hossi with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the client, Heartland Church. The property at 5046 Terrace Drive currently is one lot. We are proposing that of a rezoning and a replat of this lot. Currently, there are two zoning, two zonings over this one lot. The back west half is DR, and the southeast corner where the church is has a R6 zoning. We are asking for approval to break that off into two lots, the back part of the lot being by itself, and the existing church have its own lot, and then an R5 zoning that covers the lot as a whole, the two lots as a whole. And I'll make myself available for any questions afterwards as well.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six to eight are approved, six to zero. Items nine to twelve relate to the same project and can be considered together for Villa Rose on 15th located at 3107 and 3119 South 15th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine, an ordinance to rezone this property from R535 District to R7 District. Item 10, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Villa Rose on 15th. Item 11, a resolution to approve the final plat for Villa Rose on 15th.
The public hearing on items nine through 11 begin at this time. Are there any proponents? You're an opponent. I'll catch you in just a second. Name and address.
My name is Mike Thompson at 13532 Redwood Street. I am representing the Holy Name Housing Corporation on this redevelopment of this property on 15th and Spring. It's simple rezoning from R5 to R7 for increased density of housing.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard as a proponent? Seeing none, if you could remove your drawing. Are there any opponents wishing to be heard?
My name is Morton D. Sullivan of Morton D. Sullivan LLC, representing Northwest 4 LLC. My testimony contains my personal opinion. I have the power of attorney to represent the property owner, Northwest 4 LLC, that is the legal property owner of 3120 South 14th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I am here to formally request the denial of the project named Villa Rose on 15th located at 3107 South 15th Street and 3119 South 15th Street next to and adjoining my client's land with a common easement driveway. I now want to give the Omaha City Clerk the response for the denial of the proposed development project in a legal letter dated October 31st, 2008, with many information attachments telling about the area land. I want to go on the record that on the Omaha Planning Board meeting day, I was not able to file a denial to their request because I was admitted to the emergency room at the CHI Hospital at 72nd Street with possible heart attack symptoms. In the past weeks, I fell in the shower and hit my head on the wall and was again admitted to the emergency room at the CHI Hospital at 72nd Street. I was told that because it affected my thinking and memory and now have to start rehabilitation. I now stand here before you, all in major pain with a flare up of diverticulitis. When I am through, please excuse me so I can leave the hearing and go to the medical clinic for my bruised hand and swelling of my left hand. I was told that my presence was required here today in order to get the legal letter and information attachments filed with the Omaha City Clerk, if needed, for future court hearings. I again want to make the formal request for the denial of the project named Villa Rose on 15th. I want to make the formal request that the Omaha City Council members review all the legal information that I have submitted and take all the time needed by a continuance to review the legal matter and the many attachments before they make their decision and vote for the betterment for that future development area in the city of Omaha. Thank you for the time, and now I'm going to leave the hearing. Thank you, Morton Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. If you want your comments and exhibits made a part of the record, you have to hand them to...
I can't hear you.
If you have something you want to give to the clerk, you have to hand it to the clerk.
Here's all the information.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other opponents wishing to be heard? You're excused. Thank you. Thanks for the effort you made to come today. And in the future, you can always email the stuff in if you're unable to attend. And just email it to the clerk, and it'll be a part of the record. Mary Cornet was the best. All right. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. President. Yes. Would you mind just maybe a couple-minute indulgence as maybe, as opposed to maybe laying this over, maybe we can, if you don't mind? If the council is all right, we can, and the clerk approves, we can proceed to the next item and come back to this. Any objection? Without objections, so we're...
Yep. If there's no objections, we'll move on. Items 12 to 15 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Tower Plaza Replat 14 located at 8012 West Dodge Road and 8031 Davenport Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 12, an ordinance to rezone this property from R7 District and GC District to CC District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval of a request to rezone to CC but a denial of a request to rezone to GC. Item 13, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the ACI-265 District to incorporate this property into that district. Item 14, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Tower Plaza Replat 14. Item 15, a resolution to approve the final plat for Tower Plaza Replat 14.
The public hearing on items 12 through 15 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Douglas Dreesen, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Dreesen, if you would. This is in my district, and I think is a property about 80th and Dodge that's sort of in the transitional area where there's a lot of commercial development along Dodge, but then some neighborhoods to the north there. And I think as part of this, these items, there's a demolition of a home for additional parking to the north. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But it sounds like no opposition, and there's been adequate preparation for the ACI designation and shielding and landscaping and things, too.
Yes, we've worked with, there's another residential home to the west. We've worked extensively with that individual to make sure he's okay with what we're doing. That's the last residential home in our block. There are some commercial houses across the street, but there's also some residential. The screening's been set up to protect those residential pieces, and I agree with you, this is a transitional area that's kind of moving from residential into more of a commercial use.
And what businesses will use the parking?
The business to the south, the owner of this property also owns the business to the south. I'm trying to remember what was in that building, but that's kind of the reason they acquired this. They needed additional parking for that existing facility that fronts Dodge Street.
Okay. And what's that business?
I don't remember off the top of my head what they got. They ran it out to a tenant, so I'm not sure what's going on there.
Okay.
I should know better, but I just can't recall.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 12 through 15 are approved, six to zero. Item 16, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Legend Trails with waivers of Section 53-82 street width, Section 53-93 curb and gutter, and Section 53-99 sidewalks located northwest of 222nd and Q Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval with the waivers.
The public hearing on item 16 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Welcome, Mr. Lang.
Thank you. Members of the Omaha City Council, my name is Jim Lang. I'm an attorney at 13340 California Street here in Omaha. I represent the applicant, Frank Crecci. This is a single-family residential subdivision located northwest of 222nd and Q Street, contains 86 lots, and the Planning Department and Planning Board has recommended approval of the preliminary plat as well as the waivers listed on the agenda. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, six to zero.
Say for nine through 11? All right, let's keep going then.
Item 17 and 18 can be considered together for a property located at 13090 and 14001 L Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 17, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the future land use element of the master plan to change the future land use map from office commercial to industrial for these properties. Item 18, an ordinance to rezone these properties from CC District to GI District.
The public hearing on items 17 and 18 begin at this time. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 and 18 are approved, six to zero. Item 19, an ordinance to rezone the property located southeast of 10th and Pierce Streets from GC District and R7 District to R7 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item 19 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, six to zero. Item 20, an application to consider a Class CK liquor license for the flight deck located at 2929 California Plaza, number 1015.
Public hearing on item number 20 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, appearing today on behalf of the applicant. This is the latest amenity in the Atlas Building, which was newly renovated, will be a bar and grill. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
It's a chance for them to make their pitch as to what the menu is, if anyone wants to... Heard there might be a taproom in there, too. Mr. Lacy? You want a free advertisement here?
Pat Lacy, 1610 South 35th Street, and I'm one of the managers at the new Flight Deck Tap and Grill. And it's going to be high-end bar food with a full round of, or a range of drinks, beer, and we're real excited about it, working with Todd Heistad to get this thing rolling.
Well, congratulations. Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 20 is approved, six to zero. Is everyone ready to vote on items nine through 11?
We're back. Just for the record on items nine through 11, the council members, having reviewed the information the opponent submitted, no lights are on. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Is that a second, Mr. Harding? Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items nine through 11 are approved, six to zero.
Back to 21.
Item 21, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Aika San Ramen located at 1114 Jones Street.
The public hearing on item number 21 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hello, my name is Jose Dionisio. I own Aika Ramen. I'm just here to answer some questions.
Welcome. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Hi, Jose, how are you?
Good, sir.
Good. So this is an expansion, right? You're not leaving Benson, correct?
No, I wouldn't leave Benson. We'll just open a new store in the old market.
Great. So you'll have three restaurants now?
Three, yes.
Great. Good to see you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Motion to approve.
Second, roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 21, our item 21 is approved, six to zero. Item 22, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Rosati's Pizza located at 14513 West Maple Road, Unit 16.
Public hearing on item number 22 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Good afternoon, the council. My name is Kent Owl from 3121 North 128th Street. I'm here representing KTA Enterprises, doing business as Rosati Pizza. I'm here to take your question, if you may have.
Welcome. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton.
Thank you. Well, first I want to say welcome, welcome to Northwest Omaha. I'm glad you decided to come out by our house because we've been enjoying your pizza in Arlington Heights for many years. My husband's from Chicago, and we were very pleased to see that you decided to come to Omaha. And if I remember right, was this one where there was a contest to see where Rosati's was going to open, and Omaha got picked out of...
Yeah.
There was a contest where people were supposed to vote?
Yes, yes. We had, Rosati sent out a request for, I mean, throughout the US, and we got overwhelmed in response from Omaha, so Rosati's very pleased to come to Omaha.
Well, I thought that was a great idea, and I'm really glad that Omaha won that one. So thank you very much, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Melston.
Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 22 is approved, six to zero.
I thank you.
Item 23, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Taqueria Los Compadres located at 10904 Q Street.
The public hearing on item number 23 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, yes, Your Honor. Mr. President, members of the council, my name's Bradford Barker, attorney, appearing on behalf of ownership and management of Taqueria Los Compadres, 10904 Q Street. I'm here to take any questions at this time.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 23 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item 24, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Golden Grocery Store located at 6341 North 24th Street. Is communications in opposition?
Before we begin this one, how many people are here wishing to testify on this item? Okay. Public hearing at this, begins at this time on item number 24. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, fellow counselors. Kyle McGinn, McGinn Law Firm, business address of 20 North 16th Street, Council plus Iowa, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Golden Grocery Store LLC, doing business as Golden Grocery Store. On behalf of Mr. Kabeide and Mr. Tagegney, we're here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Did you want a minute of rebuttal if you need it?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Holly Britton. I reside at 2417 Bauman Avenue. I'm actually a fairly brand-new resident. I'm a little disappointed that I think my councilman, Ben Gray, isn't here today.
I think he's at the National League of Cities today, so...
Right. So it would have been really nice to address him personally, but I'd like to address, obviously, all of you guys as members of the Omaha City Council. I'm here in opposition to the change of liquor license from what's currently a Class B at that location to a Class D. I've done a little bit of research into the literature. As the density and type of liquor establishment increases, there's also a corresponding increase of five to six percent in four different types of violent crime, assault, property crime, rape, and just crime in general. Currently, the location where it's at right now is very residential. It's almost all entirely houses around there, besides the current grocery store location, which is there as... And the next closest liquor establishment with that type of liquor license, which is now TNA Express, I believe it was R&amp;L Packaged Liquor before, just had a officer shooting right next to it. My personal opinion is that both the literature and my personal opinion support not increasing the type of liquor license at that location at this time.
Thank you. Does that complete your testimony?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing none, do the proponents wish any time for rebuttal? Okay. We'll try to do it in a minute.
Absolutely. Again, this is an existing location. It's been a grocery store for some time. These gentlemen simply wish to continue it as a grocery store. They have engaged the neighborhood, have attended neighborhood association meetings, intend to both keep this property clean and free from crime, and increase the food offerings in that neighborhood. So with that, we'd request that the council approve the application.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. I would point out to council members, as we're waiting for lights, there goes one. We have to take action on this today because our recommendation is due to the commission before the next meeting. So if we did nothing today, there would be no recommendation. Ms. Melton.
Thank you. And I guess I'm just a little surprised that we, that there wasn't more opposition down here. We did receive a packet that had a number of people opposing this. And I'm looking at this, Mr. McGinn, the alcohol that he's planning on selling currently, there's just beer sold there. Is that correct?
That is correct, ma'am.
And he wants to go, and right now, it's going to go to Class D, so he could sell all alcohol.
That is the intention for liquor, wine, and beer.
Well, and I know that Councilman Gray typically, in areas, especially around neighborhoods where there's a lot of opposition, will limit it so that there's none of the small shots or even the pints. We certainly don't want this to become the, I think what they say, the neighborhood cooler.
Sure.
What is your client willing to do or to agree to for purposes of getting a liquor license here?
Sure. May I invite him to speak directly?
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
Thank you.
You have to give your name and address before you talk.
Okay, my name is Marcos Cabada. I'm the manager and owner of Golden Grocery Store.
Could you pull the microphone down a little bit, please? Thank you.
Okay, my address, 4125 South 42nd Street, and the business address is 6341 North 24th Street.
So there was a question, sir, from Ms. Melton, so maybe she'll repeat it for you.
Sir, what I'm interested in is what exactly are you planning to sell? Because currently, the store, as is, has been selling beer. I understand the concerns from the neighbors, and we received a number of emails from various people. And just because somebody can't come down here, I don't discount, I read the emails, and I consider their objections as well. And we don't want your store to become a place where somebody just goes to get the small shots or even the pints. We don't want to litter Minna Lusa neighborhood. So what would you be willing to restrict your alcohol sales to in order to get the license? Would you be able, or would you be willing to not sell anything less? And I may have to ask for Councilman Jerem's expertise. Is it nothing less than 750? Am I correct on that?
Yeah, we usually do nothing less than 750 ml distilled spirits and nothing 24-ounce or under on beer. But I don't know if they have restrictions on the B license today.
Oh, that there's none on there today?
I don't see it.
I'm not aware of any on the...
So...
Would you be willing, as an exchange to get hard alcohol, to accept the limitations even on the beers? And I guess I would have to ask, we could, can we do that, as far as you know?
Yes. They have a B, they're seeking an upgrade to a D. It's whether they will agree to an amended D with restrictions. Mr. Acosta Trejo's here, too. I think he could confirm that for us, but that's my understanding.
Well, let me see if, would you be willing to agree to that first before I call Mr. Acosta Trejo down here? Acosta Trejo down here?
Yeah, I have a plan to...the one inside the counter, everything is on inside the counter. I have a meeting on the association with last Thursday. They have a question as why you do this, and something like that. I just have a question. Is that agree to have to clean up everything? I don't know any other stuff on outside the counter. We just keep it inside the counter, everything.
Well, and I appreciate that, so that it can't be stolen. But what I'm asking is, would you be willing to accept restrictions on your license so that you can't sell the little single shots or less than 24 ounces of beer and nothing under the 750?
So, you'd get...what you'd get is you'd get wine bottles. You'd get 750 ml and larger distilled spirits, and you'd get beer in six-packs, 12-packs, 30-packs, whatever, and any singles over 24 ounces, which I think the next size would be 32.
Yeah, I'd like to that to do.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
You agree to that restriction?
Yeah.
Okay. We have another light.
Okay. And thank you. That's...I would support it if you would agree to all of those restrictions, including the beer restrictions. So, you may not be able...if you're selling the less than 24 ounces, you wouldn't be able to do that anymore.
Understood.
Understood?
Thank you.
Well, you could sell, and they just have to be in six-packs or bigger. All right, Mr. Palermo.
Mr. President, I too appreciate you agreeing to that. But something I caught early on, you had mentioned that you were going to add to the...was it to the food or the groceries in the store?
Yeah, that's correct, Councilman. This is an existing grocery store location. The applicants, in this instance, intend to expand the food offerings at that store at present. They've installed new refrigeration, kind of revamped the interior, and intend to expand the offerings for that neighborhood.
Okay, because that's important. Sometimes we hear of expanded liquor licenses are what we're able to sell, but we don't hear that part of it where food is a priority, especially in certain neighborhoods that look for those type of things they can find. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to amend?
Would this just be approval with the stipulation?
Or is it approval of the D with the restrictions?
With the stipulations, yeah.
That's okay. All right. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve it with the restrictions.
Agreed to by the applicant. Attorney, confirm?
That is correct.
Okay, is there a second?
And then also, can we add in that waiver of liquor rule seven?
Oh, this is close to a park, so we have to waive rule seven. Is that included in your motion?
Yes.
In your second?
To waive rule seven.
Okay. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion.
Your...
Motion passed, six to zero.
Your license has been recommended for approval with those restrictions.
Thank you, Counselor.
Items 25 to 28 relate to Keno satellite agreements and can be considered together. Resolutions to grant approval to EHPV lottery service to operate Big Red Keno satellite locations for the following: Grover Inn located at 3505 South 42nd Street, Sippin Sirens located at 4302 South 42nd Street, Ryan's Food and Spirits located at 12221 Mary Plaza, and West End located at 1529 South 203rd Street, Sweet One.
The public hearing on items 25 through 28 is at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Katrina Coffey. I'm vice president of marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 11248 John Galt Boulevard. I have with me today all four of the owners for the locations that appear before you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
25 through 28 are approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on items 29 through 33 were held October 30.
Can I be approved?
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 29 through 33 are approved, six to zero.
The public hearings on items 34 and 36 through 54 begin at this time. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item, number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent.
Did you want to remove 35?
We're also going to allow conversation because there...I thought I did remove 35. I said 34 and then 36.
Oh, you didn't. Sorry.
Any opponents, proponents on those items? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls?
I'd like to speak to the issue of 36.
Okay.
Mr. Stube?
Stube, Public Works.
Thank you, Bob. This morning, we had a little bit of a discussion on this particular item. This deals with snow on people's properties that have not been kept up to date. Could you just give me a little bit since the...discuss a little bit about the bids and the costs so the public would have a better understanding of this? I'd appreciate that.
Sure. So, this is a contract for snow removal on sidewalks where the city will get a complaint about noncompliant with snow removal. We notify the property owner of that particular complaint, allow the property owner to essentially cure the situation. If the property owner doesn't cure the situation, then we call out a contractor to actually remove that snow. And so, the amount that the contractor would charge is based on the proposal that we receive from that particular contractor. And again, we only use this in situations where property owners essentially don't want to comply with that particular complaint that comes through.
Right. And last year, we had several people come in front of us on the equalization board, and I...at that time, I was surprised at the cost, but those costs are going up because the bids have also gone up. Is that...
Yeah. Traditionally, in the past, and I kind of went back through the last five years, is that until this year, we've only received one bid. And of the last five snow seasons, there was only two of the last five where we actually exercised the contract and had a contractor go out. Three of those years, we didn't expend any dollars to the contractor for that particular service. But this year's particular cost is significantly greater than what it was last year, and it's even a lot higher than what it was in the previous bids that we've received.
But like you say, we're fortunate because this is an issue that we do not deal with very often, is my understanding.
That is correct. And again, it really comes down to the fact that, you know, we try to give the property owner as much opportunity to do the work themselves or hire it out themselves. But again, if they don't want to comply, we do have this as a resource that can be utilized by the city to actually have that work done.
And the point I want to get across here, if that happened to be my property, and if I did not shovel the snow and it was turned in, I get...you come to my door, put something on my door that says, "Rich, it's time to clean the sidewalks." Is that what you do?
That is correct. So, we do do notification by letter. We are going to do what you suggested this morning, include in the future letters the costs so that the property owner can make a determination as far as whether they...so that at least they'll know what that cost is, and they can decide whether they want to pay it to have that contractor do it. But obviously, it's a significant cost. And I use an example that if you have 100 feet of frontage and you've got a four or five-foot wide sidewalk, that cost is $6 per lineal foot. And so, removing all the snow on your frontage is going to be $600, and I would estimate that you could probably hire somebody else to do that work for you and a lot cheaper than this particular cost.
Yeah. Right. And I truly appreciate, because I see that you're at least trying to be as fair as possible to let the individuals know that this is going to be a significant cost to them if they do not comply. And I appreciate adding that because I...it makes me feel a little bit better because I know some people are caught unaware. And they get 24 hours. Is that what I am to assume, once the letter goes on the door?
Well, we give them multiple opportunities, but I believe that it is...we notify them that they got 24 hours to get it cured. If they don't do it, then we give the contractor 24 hours. So, essentially, it's like 48 hours. But again, we don't necessarily utilize the services of the contractor, again, once, if the property owner is willing to take care of it themselves. Two, if we haven't received multiple complaints. Three would be is that if there's, you know, evidence that the temperatures are going to rise to allow Mother Nature to take care of it. So, we really, again, don't try to exercise as it's kind of like the last resort.
And I appreciate, to be honest with you, that attitude because it does need to be cleaned off, but it does appear that we're going to be...give the individuals the adequate amount of time and at least the cost figure so they can make that decision to follow through on that issue. Thank you. I appreciate your...
You're welcome. Ms. Melton?
Thank you. And I just want to, you know, make sure, and I want to notify people. I know sometimes people call in on other people. This is a complaint-based system. The city isn't going out and looking for sidewalks that haven't been shoveled. So, if a complaint comes in, then the city will go out. We had a situation that came up from last year where a poor woman who was on very limited income went into the hospital. I think she was having heart problems. There was a snowstorm. When she got home, somebody was shoveling her driveway. She actually went out and thanked them, and it was the city, and we billed her a couple hundred bucks. It wasn't the city's fault. The city didn't know that those were the circumstances. But I guess what I would say to everybody in Omaha as the winter season approaches, if you see a neighbor who doesn't have their sidewalks shoveled, you might want to walk next door, see how they're doing, see if they have any problems, and maybe kind of in that hashtag, be kind. Let's check on our neighbors and make sure that they're maybe not in the hospital or suffering something like that. Maybe send one of your teenage boys over. I have a couple of those, so one to spare. But send somebody over and maybe, you know, shovel it themselves because the cost of this contract that we have right now and what people are going to be charged if they don't shovel their sidewalks is extraordinary and could really affect the ability of somebody to even pay for their food for that month. So, we don't have any choice. We put a bid out. This is the bid that we got. This was the lowest bid, but it's very expensive. So, that's what I would do. I would just ask everybody, if you see a neighbor that doesn't have their sidewalk shoveled, try and find out why before calling the city and maybe see if you can lend them a helping hand. Thank you.
And it seems like most neighborhoods have that person that has the snow blower that just can't help themselves. They want to get out there. Maybe that person can be enlisted. And Eastern Nebraska Office on Aging, ENOA, has assistance for seniors who qualify with snow removal. Mr. Palermo?
Mr. President, and then just adding on this item also for Public Works, Mr. Stube, could you remind me, was this the low bid we received?
We received two bids. This was the low bid.
34 and 36 through 54?
Yes.
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
The public hearing on item 35 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a quick word on this item. This is the replacement of all the carpeting at Benson Library Branch, which will be happening soon. The library director cannot be with us this afternoon, so I just wanted to pass on the discussion we had this morning about it, which is, they think it is a very extensive project when you think about replacing wall-to-wall carpet in an entire library, which means the library will have to close for a period of time, up to five or six weeks. We're encouraging that it go quicker than that, but in the meantime, there was a discussion this morning about offering library services to patrons during that timeframe, probably in the front room there, and continuing circulation. So, I think that would be helpful during that time, and I wanted my folks to know that before we start this project. And with that, I would motion to approve.
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Pass.
Councilmember Jerem passed due to a potential conflict of interest, and item 35 is approved, five to zero. Item 55, an ordinance to approve a lease agreement with the City of Blair and the Blair Airport Authority for a helicopter hangar facility to be located at the Blair Airport in Washington County for a 10-year period.
Public hearing was held October 30. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a couple of questions, if I could, please. I do see Deputy Chief Newman out there. If you could come up.
Good afternoon, President, council members. Attorney Newman, Omaha Police Department, Deputy Chief, 505 South 15th Street.
Thank you for being here again. I wanted to run by a scenario for you and then ask you a question. So, in my district, District 4, let's say, my grandmother, who's elderly, possibly suffers from dementia, gets out of the house. It's cold outside. It's the winter months. Time is of the essence, obviously. I know there's a couple of different scenarios from what we heard last week as far as ABLE-1. Can you explain the process to me?
Yeah, there's a process in place, it's in our policies and procedures, about responding to assess the Uniform Patrol Bureau in various situations. I think it'd be more adequate for Lieutenant Davis, who operates a helicopter and is a pilot, to walk through procedures on what they do to take off their pre-flight checks and get that helicopter up and running, and then also how the equipment functions and the necessary equipment we'll need for a situation where we're looking for any kind of missing person with helicopter equipment. So, I'm going to turn that over to Lieutenant Davis.
Council members?
Mike Davis, 505 South 15th Street. What we do, we'll get a call similar to what you just said. We will...we're going to wait until the officers get to the scene. They're trained to know if we can help out. But during that time that they're going to the call, we'll do a quick pre-flight just to look over the aircraft, make sure there's no fluids leaking. We'll push the helicopter out. Usually, by then, we should have what we need, the information we need, and we're going to assume we're going to go. That call alone would give us red flags. We probably need to get down there. So, what we would do is, we would start...do a start sequence. We'll start the helicopter. It takes about 30 seconds to start. And then, once it starts, we'll do a...it'll have to...we'll let it stabilize for a minute, and then we'll start. We'll take the...because at this time, it's running off the battery, so we have to introduce the generator. And we'll do that about a minute 30 after we start the helicopter. Once we get the generator on online, we can start adding electrical equipment, cameras, radios. So, about three minutes into it, we'll bring the night vision camera onboard along with all the radios. We can take off immediately. On a call like that, I would estimate that we would probably try to fly it about as fast as we can. Obviously, the helicopter's rated for 150 miles per hour. We have extra equipment, the FLIR, the radios. We're not going to...if we don't have favorable conditions, we won't be able to go 150 miles an hour, but 120 knots or 140 miles an hour, that would probably work. During that time, it takes 10 minutes for our FLIR to go through all of its self-tests to where we can use the night vision portion of that camera. So, we would fly to the area. We would get how long the person's been gone, and that kind of shows how much of an area we have to cover. We don't want to search too close in case they're outside of the circle that we're looking in, or we don't want to search too far out and they're actually closer in. So, it takes about...takes about a minute and a half to get it started, another minute and a half, two minutes, to get the electricals online, and then we can take off immediately. And then, we'll go as fast as we absolutely can down to a call like that. and then we'll go as fast as we absolutely can down to a call like that. And then, once the FLIR comes online, we'll start looking.
Okay, thank you. So that's one part of it, I guess there's a part two, because we heard last week that we don't have a 24/7 operation, so there's that chance that nobody would actually be at the airport, or?
Correct.
Okay, so then it would be getting to the airport, and then the same scenario for startup that you had just mentioned, or the other part is, you're already up in the air, and then determining where you are, you could be really close or far away.
Correct.
So I guess the main point of that is, when time is of the essence, especially in a situation like that, and I could give you many different ones, it's just a matter of how close you are, depending on the situation on the startup.
In that situation with no one available at the hangar, we do have a call-in procedure for the helicopter pilots, where we'll call them at home and ask them to respond. Again, they'll evaluate the situation and see if it's, if they can do any good for a search like that, which they probably would be able to. And it's written in our policy that the uniform patrol officers should expect a 90-minute response if they have to call in the helicopter pilots from their home as well. I guess to summarize what Lieutenant Davis just told you, that any time we go from a startup to respond, it's going to take 13 minutes to have all the necessary equipment available on that helicopter to be operational. And we can fly anywhere in the city in 13 minutes, from Blair, from the North Omaha Airport, and even have some time where we're waiting for that FLIR to come online. And that FLIR is not just night vision, that's a heat sensor, so they use it during the daytime as well, to be able to find people, let's say in cornfields, or in, you know, places that you can't see with the bare eye, even whether it's daylight or nighttime.
Sure, okay, thank you, appreciate that. So I have a couple of other questions that I just need cleared up from constituents that I heard from, from last week, and we talked about it, and one, I guess, will be to finance, if I could. Is it Nicole, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we had heard about some issues at the North Omaha Airport, in which possibly the roof needed a little work, or we had police officers that were doing the mowing, and I guess my question from there is, is as we see a lot of issues coming to us as a council, to work on landlords that need that push to be a better landlord, my question to you is, we as a city, as a tenant, did we ever miss a payment, did we ever deduct from a payment for maybe the services that the landlord didn't give us into that contract?
Nicole, sweetie, City Finance. To my knowledge, we did not, we did do a check, and it looks like we are up to date on payments, so.
So even with the issues and the problems we heard that were going on, possibly happened, we still made that payment in full to that landlord?
Yes, to my knowledge, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then the other part is, I guess a big part that we see time and time again, where we have a liability coming from us, and it's from that aggressive third-party that we have as a law from the state, and I guess this would be to the Law Department, Paul, if I could. I looked through, oh, sorry, Michelle Peters, sorry.
Michelle Peters, Deputy City Attorney.
Okay, so the aggressive third-party liability that we have as a city, I guess I didn't know we were the only state in the union, is that true, that has this in place, that if during a pursuit, that possibly we are liable for?
So that is the strict liability, and yes, we are the only state in the union who has a strict liability. So what that basically means is that we're going to pay on pursuits regardless of whether or not our officers are negligent or not. Every other state does an analysis to determine whether or not the officer involved in the pursuit is negligent. In our case, if some, if a third party is injured, we're going to pay regardless.
Okay. So what I read through, it mostly described the vehicle pursuits.
Correct.
I didn't see anything about Able One up in the air, to where they were dispatched to help assist, and we had the officers back off. If there was an incident when the Uniform Patrol were following the bad guy, and we had them fall back, and Able One was the only one in pursuit, would we be liable for something that happened?
Under the pursuit statute, it specifically talks about vehicular pursuits, so no. A helicopter pursuit is exempt, and in fact, that is one of, as we recall, 20 years ago, that was one of the big pushes for that, that they could definitely help in those cases. And I think that if Lieutenant Davis got up here, he would tell you that in fact, just this week, they were involved in One, they happened to be up in the air and hovering over the traffic stop just as the guy took off, and so they didn't even really have to dispatch him, they were already doing their job. However, there was another one later the day or the next day, and they weren't up in the air. And so it's like, dang it, where's Able One? So, you know, it's just, it's, timing is everything. And so, again, the police department can certainly advise you about what conditions are favorable for flying. There's too much heat, too cold, too much wind, there's a lot of factors that go into whether or not Able One is available at any given time.
Sure. So it goes back to that time thing for me, and I know last week we'd heard from two different sides of the distance, the amount of time it would take from moving from Douglas County to another county. I don't know if everybody is aware, but the North Omaha Airport is not inside the city limits.
That's true.
That would be a big change if it were, especially when we talk about growth and spending possible bond money to improve for the Omaha Police Department. I still can't wrap my head around why, maybe there's some federal aviation guidelines that we don't have any property, or possibly the training area that we could put this helicopter, or why Millard wouldn't somehow make some room for us. I understand why we're not at Epley, but I still can't for the life of me figure out how, in the scenario I figured, or I mentioned, where time is so critical, and then something like this, where we have these liabilities that, I know I've seen numerous ones in front of me, from just being on the council, to where if Able One was there and we could back off, it would take that liability away. So time is important across the board. And then we heard also that even though there might have been some issues with the landlord, we still paid that landlord on time and in full as a city. So I don't know if that's shame on us, or maybe just working forward, we dot the i's and cross the t's a little better. So I appreciate you coming up, thank you.
Ms. Melton.
Thank you. Thank you, too. It's the time difference, and I'm sorry, maybe Officer Davis might answer, so it's the time difference from Blair to North Omaha, when you're flying a helicopter that can go 150 miles per hour?
Yeah, they did a couple of test flights, and they actually flew the helicopter at 115 miles an hour?
Yes.
115 miles an hour. One way it took two minutes and 38 seconds, and then the other way it took?
Two fifty-eight.
Two fifty-eight, and of course, it depends on headwind and stuff, and that's if?
Well, but I, I think I, you know where I'm going with my next question.
Yeah.
What area of Omaha had the most number of calls, which I think I was surprised about, but?
Yeah, and I was, you know, I was, we had that question last week, and so I did a little research on it, because I felt that the area is not what everyone would suspect. The largest number of calls from them come from the most populated area of the city, which is the Northwest Precinct, by far, almost 20,000 more calls in the Northwest Precinct. And then secondly, is the Southwest Precinct. And that just boils down to pure numbers, so they're just more populated.
And so, and this location actually is closer to Northwest Omaha than the current location, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Nothing further.
The representative for the landlord is here and asks just to have a minute or two. Mr. Green, did you want to say something before we take the vote?
John Green, 6910 Pacific Street, Suite 208, representing the property owner, Mr. Edquist. First, I wanted to dispel a couple myths here. The first myth is, does the roof leak? No, the roof had a warranty problem, that was the manufacturer and the person who put in the roof came in and fixed. It was, there was some leaks on particularly nasty days, and those are the days when all of us would get some water into our houses or into our basements, because everything was saturated and everything was so wet. In regards to cutting the grass, that has never, ever, ever happened. Never. Mr. Edquist personally cuts the grass out there, and my understanding is, is that you had an employee who was not a sworn officer, who kind of repaired lawn mowers while he was at the shop, and would test them, and that was the information that got back. The building is not shabby, as has been related to you, it's a very fine facility, if you just look at the pictures that the World Herald took, to see what a fine facility it is. What Mr. Edquist is offering to you is a less expensive plan, not in the city limits, but adjacent to the city, and using bond money for property adjacent to the city, which will eventually be annexed, is something that you do every day, when it comes to roads and sewers and things like that. So that's not a problem, it's going to another county, which is a very rare thing, and the only time the City of Omaha has ever gone outside of the county to do anything, was for the sewer project down in Sarpy County, and that was a joint operation between two counties and several municipalities, with a huge federal funding that went along with it for watershed purposes. Now, I left with each one of you and with the clerk, a description of what the new, what the facility would look like if you decided to pull back, take another look at it, and stay at the North Omaha Airport. What you would have, you would have a dedicated helipad adjacent to an existing airport, which serves nothing but single or double-prop general aviation aircraft. You aren't going to have to deal with commercial traffic like you would at Epley, you aren't going to have to deal with high-level jet airliners or jet planes like you would at now Millard, and as Millard gets bigger and bigger, the off-flow is scheduled to be to Blair. So Blair's going to have the same problem, and like we said before the last time, Blair's going to have sailplanes, they're going to have scheduled private commercial jets there, they're going to have all kinds of other aviation training, all kinds of things that go along there. North Omaha Airport is limited to what it does. Mr. Ed, all of the area on the west side of the current runway, that is not dedicated to helicopters, will move to the east side. There will be a structure there, and two lots over from where this facility would be is already a helicopter pad dedicated, and that's owned by a person within the community who flies his helicopter out of there. So the west side of that, North Omaha Airport would be?
If we could wrap it up, please.
Would be nothing but helicopters. But I just wanted you to know that, and whether you fly there to get gas and come back, you take that time and double it. Thank you very much, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. I would just add, my thoughts on this is that if this were not approved today, it does not mean that there would be a deal negotiated with the North Omaha Airport, it would mean that this contract or lease proposal would be disapproved, which then tosses it back to the department, which then has to decide what it wants to do, and the options before it, and where they want it to go, doesn't automatically, it's not an either-or. Second, is the way I look at this, is that I know Lieutenant Davis, I've flown an Able One with him, and for me, even though I also know Mr. Edquist and Mr. Green, and they're upstanding people, I know enough about Lieutenant Davis, and when he tells us that he doesn't believe there's any sacrifice to public safety, you know, I take him at his word, as a man of impeccable character for that. And so it comes down to whether the department and its needs assessment, and their professional opinions can be adequately served in Blair. I had one constituent that said, well, you know, what about Blair being sold or something? I looked up, it's a municipal airport, it's owned by the City of Blair, and it's right on their, whatever their call signals are, if you click on them, it goes right to all their ownership information. So although I'm disappointed that after many, many, many years of a good working relationship with Mr. Edquist, that the department wants to make this move, but I don't believe, based upon what I've heard about the ability to fulfill the mission of Able One, that I want to second-guess that call. And in the context of the commercial lease environment, there are these decisions made, I'm sure Mr. Harding can say, every day, there are very long relationships that come to an end. And I was in a lease for my law practice for over 25 years, and I got the boot, because it's now a come and go. And you know what, it was a real easy drive from my house, it was easy to get in and out of, and I now some days painfully drive by that as I go further to my office, but it happens. It doesn't mean that the landlord's bad, or the tenant's bad, it's just that these commercial decisions are made, and it's not a judgment to, in any way, call into question Mr. Edquist or Lieutenant Davis. It's just, it's what the decision is that has been made, so that's how I see this. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too, I agree with what you just said, I think it's important to say that for the record, too. I think we've had a long relationship with Ms. Edquist and the North Omaha Airport, I think we have to rely on the analysis that the departments have done on this, and number one is public safety. And as the department has said, this is not going to jeopardize in any way the public safety that's provided to the citizens of Omaha. And the facility at Blair will serve the purposes going forward for a number of years, and I guess, as Mr. Jerem said, in my, the other world I kind of live in, you see these relationships, and after a period of time, and it's kind of like breaking up, but we're onto a new relationship, and I think it's going to well-serve the police department and the public safety for the citizens of Omaha. Thanks.
Thanks. Any other lights? Seeing none, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fifty-five is approved, five to one. Item fifty-six, a resolution to approve the Habitat Coontz Park Five Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located between Sailor and Evan Streets and between North Eighteenth and Twenty-Fourth Streets, in an amount up to $405,000.
The public hearing on item fifty-six begins at this time, are there any proponents?
I guess, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This project by Habitat is in the area of the Coontz Park, King Science School vicinity, the yellow sites are the redevelopment sites. We're looking at 24 single-family homes with this project, 22 will be new construction to or rehabs. Total project is about a $5 million investment in the neighborhood, they're asking for $405,000 in TIF support. This will strengthen the neighborhood, it increases homeownership, project meets the criteria of the TIF program, and it's an appropriate land use for the area. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Approve.
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fifty-six is approved, six to zero. Item fifty-seven, a resolution to approve the professional services agreement with Alfred Banesch and Company in the amount of $45,000 for the 2018-2019 residential snowplow inspectors' street maintenance project.
The public hearing on item fifty-seven begins at this time, are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed, Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's not Groundhog Day, it's Election Day, so bear with me, I'm going to read to you job responsibilities for four men, three, in the street department. I believe there's four or five of them, we'll just leave it at that, four or five, that roughly got?
We'll just leave it at that, four or five, that roughly got about a $10,000 raise that we approved for other duties assigned, added duties. And I'm going to read to you the two that are on here that came from a contract that we voted to approve. And the first one says, "Inspects the work completed by contractors to determine if the work was done according to local codes or job specifications." Would that have to do with residential contractor snow removal? Sure. But just in case you weren't sure, I'm going to read you the next one that's in the description here. "Oversees snow removal operations in an assigned area of the city, which includes contract oversight." We're not taking anybody out of a plow. These are people that are already employed by the city, that got a raise to do a little extra work. I think we approved two of these, or maybe $90,000 worth, last week. This is money that if we need these people, then create the jobs, then hire more foremen to do this. And you might say, well, besides that employee, it comes with benefits and everything else. Well, in this contract, on the resolution here, number 57, this comes at $100 an hour. I'm sure that whoever we would hire, whether it's Local 251 or that, that foreman group, they're not making 100 bucks an hour, not even on overtime. So as we continue to sub this work out, we lessen the amount of city employees that we need. Thank you.
Thank you. And no other lights? Is there a motion? Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 57 is approved, four to two. Next on the agenda is a legislative package, and that's items 58 through 69. I think there was talk of laying them over.
To lay over for two weeks, because we do not have counsel next week. So a motion to lay over till November 20th.
And continue the public hearing?
And continue the public hearing, yes.
Okay. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 70, an ordinance to approve a fiscal year 2018 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program Award in the amount of $376,710 from October 1, 2017 to September 30, 2021.
The public hearing on item 70 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 71, an ordinance to approve the fiscal year 2018 Violent Gang and Gun Crime Reduction Program Project Safe Neighborhoods in the amount of $191,892 from October 1, 2018 to September 30, 2021.
Public hearing on item 71 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 72, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Nebraska Preparedness Partnership in the amount of $45,000, and to authorize the funding for such agreement from the fiscal year 2016 State Homeland Security Grant Award.
The public hearing on item 72 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 73, an ordinance to approve an inter-local agreement with the Omaha Municipal Land Bank for additional funding of demolition of unfit and unsafe properties and the foreclosure of demolition liens through court proceedings.
The public hearing on item 73 begins at this time. Are there any proponents, excuse me?
Council President, I'm Marty Barnhart, Omaha Municipal Land Bank, 1141 North 11th Street. I am a proponent for this action, like to see you pass this inter-local agreement. It would allow us to assist the City of Omaha with foreclosure on these properties that have not been foreclosed, that are currently sitting in the books as an uncollected lien for demolition assessments. As well, it'll allow us to be able to help move these properties through to the land bank inventory. We would then seek to get them redeveloped, either as a garden lot, an adjacent lot, or possibly a property that could be built with a brand-new home. We'd look forward to being able to assist the city this way. And in turn, the third aspect of this would be to give the city also reimbursement capital of $500,000 per year, possibly over the next four years, as is needed, according to the city budget. And as we look forward to continuing to watch these demolitions go forward, we believe that it's very possible that over the next four years, there may be 100 properties per year that would need to be demolished. Therefore, 400 properties could be addressed, and the backlog could be taken care of, and put these properties into a better state. All, all totaled, it would, again, help with staffing in the city attorney's office by virtue of us assisting with this foreclosure paperwork, not having to hire an attorney to do that. And then secondarily, as I said, assisting with getting these properties redeveloped, and of course, bring reimbursement capital to be able to fund more demolitions on the course of these next four years.
So is the land bank, Mr. Barnhart, reimbursing the city in arrears once the city incurs the demolition expenses? Or is it prospective?
This would be prospective. These funds would go into a fund, and they would be enabling the city to move forward with demolition. So rather than looking behind to, to catch up, it'd be funds that would be provided so that the demolitions could go forward.
Thank you for that clarification. Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard? Any opponents?
Larry Stewart, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha. I think we all agree that there are a lot of properties that probably need to be demolished. How we do it, and who's involved in it is, is another matter. And I'd like to see more public information about the process and the Omaha Land Bank, particularly that. And who all's involved in that? Because I have read some articles that imply there's maybe some conflict of interest possibilities there. Some of that's been pointed out by an organization called the Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. I believe they had quite a few articles on search engines about that. So let's have a little more public knowledge about it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents wishing to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm supportive of this item, and I first want to thank Marty and the Land Bank for their work to date. When, when the city council first established the land bank, this is always, I think, a point we hoped we'd get to. I think the first few years have been ramping up operations, and, and that's been done successfully, while, while accumulating vacant property and putting some property back into productive reuse. Some notable ones in my district, and including one that's on the agenda today, that I think could apply to what we're talking about, both in terms of demolitions and this next evolution of their work. Maybe a quick question for Ms. Taylor, if she's available, who I know worked on this agreement with the land bank. While she's coming up, I'll continue. I do see this as the next evolution of the work and the relationship between the city and the land bank, and defining those relationships and possibilities. And not only accumulating property and redeveloping it, and putting it back into productive reuse, but also now contributing additionally to our demolition fund, and doing so philanthropically and prospectively. But at the same time, the city then, working cooperatively with them on demolition liens and closing those properties, and being able to transfer that property then to the land bank, and have that be a symbiotic relationship. Anything you'd like to add to that description about how this will work?
No, that's fairly accurate. I think the goal is obviously?
Name and address, name, please.
Oh, sorry, Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. I've never done this before. That's the goal, is to, you know, the land bank is going to work with the city to increase our ability to, to take down properties. And Marty's exactly right, our end goal is to get to what you would call a zero-sum game at the end of the year. So in three or four years, hopefully, we could hit December 31st and not have any outstanding demolitions on the list that roll over. You know, the goal is to get these properties taken care of, and then back into, the city can take control of them and then turn them back out to the public, whether it's the land bank, which would be a likely source, or if we work with other nonprofit or other housing individual entities that will also work towards getting those properties into productive use. The goal is to take these properties from being an eyesore and a nuisance and a down, that brings down their neighborhood, get them into our control, get them cleaned up from a title perspective, and then turn back to the community so they can be built on, used as side lots, used as, you know, additional development.
And right now, there's a couple of hundred of such properties in the city right now that establish liens on them, and are effect ghost properties with no apparent outcome but for something like this, right?
The list I have as of August 1st has 207 demolition liens.
And overall, I know when we created the land bank, there are about 7,000 properties in the city that were in some form of code enforcement process. Several hundred of those were actually condemned. And in, on any given year, at least 100 were actually on the demolition list, and that's what we're still dealing with today. So I do think, if we're adding $500,000 to the mix of what the council has done to increase the demolition budget every year to about $1 million, that's a big increase that could be pretty impactful right away. I want to make sure, though, when that happens, that that funding isn't supplanted in some way, and is truly a, you know, 50% increase there. So I think, based on our discussions this morning, what would happen with a donation from the land bank would be an enterprise fund that would designate that money to demolitions, and therefore actually enhance the whole overall demolition picture. Is that how it works?
Yes, it's my understanding with Finest Department that we would have a very, we would have a specific fund so that those monies would be dedicated strictly to demolitions and would not be intermixed with anywhere else.
I think that's important. And then to the notion of public information, anything going through the land bank, or any property going through the land bank, is public information and is discussed at their monthly public meetings, and there's a forum for that, correct?
If we were to foreclose these demolition liens, the property would then be owned by the city, and would have to be transferred from the city to any other entity through this, through the legal processes that are required by the city. So that would all also be a public process. So any transfer of property from the city to the land bank or any other entity would have a public process hearing.
Okay. And when you say any private entities that might be interested, that's, those are entities like Habitat for Humanity?
Habitat, JSU, any of our nonprofit housing partners. But again, we have very specific code-required processes in place for transferring properties, and we would have to adhere to those.
Okay, thank you. Well, with that, I do think this is a major step forward in that relationship. And I think not only can enhance our demolition funding as a city, and accelerate how we handle these properties, but also accelerate getting them back into productive reuse, and therefore increase the tax base and keep neighborhoods strong. So I'll be supporting this, I guess, in what will be two weeks, when we have our next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I could ask Marty or Jennifer, but Jennifer, since you're standing there. Is there anything in this agreement that would limit this to just residential properties? Or would it include commercial properties that might be in the same situation?
The agreement itself specifically does not limit it to residential only. It could include commercial properties, but I think the general intent is, the contemplation is residential properties.
So if, I, I think I'm thinking of a commercial property where this circumstance would, would be, would cover this. Would, would that then typically go to the land bank? Or would, would the city work to dispose of that otherwise?
Any property that we acquire through this process, we would have to do a public process, even a transfer to the land bank. So there is no guarantee that any property we acquire through a demolition lien foreclosure process would necessarily go to the land bank. It could go, it could be actually retained by the city if it's something we needed. It could be disposed of to the land bank if it was something that we determined was appropriate to give to the land bank, or any other such entity. There is no guarantee in this agreement that any of the properties we acquire automatically go to the land bank.
Okay, thank you.
However, the land bank is obviously a good option for, as an entity, to acquire and assimilate and dispose of those properties.
Sure, thank you.
Next item?
Non-action items, items 74 through 89 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:23.